Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower. Okay.
Carrie, could you repeat if you... Yeah, thank you.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we are up to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to approve the minutes of the March 2nd, 2021 city council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grisgoviac. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. The first item, which is item two on our agenda, is to approve the contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids for the ICWC program. Um, ICWC is the Institution Community Work Crew Program, which provides various maintenance and minor construction projects throughout the city. The crew generally works under the supervision of the Public Works Department Supervisory Staff and completes a wide variety of projects for the city. They have been a valuable asset to the community and have provided thousands of hours of labor at a very reasonable cost. The city's current contract expires March 31st, 2021, and the proposed two-year contract fee is $201,000 with bi-annual payments of $50,250 due in April and October 2021 and 2022. The contract period would run from April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2023. Funding for this program is included in various public works budgets, including streets, parks, vehicle maintenance, sewer water, and storm water. Um, staff believes this program provides cost-effective maintenance services to supplement public works personnel and recommends that the council approval... Yeah, we're with you. Um, so we're looking to approve the updated contract between the Minnesota Department of Corrections and the city of Coon Rapids for the two-year Institution Community Work Crew ICWC program. Um, and then the next item on our consent agenda... Didn't get highlighted, so hang on, let me get there. Here we go. Um, is to consider nominations to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. Uh, it has been requested by Anoka County that the city council consider nominations for appointment to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. Staff advertised the opportunity on the city's website and by other means, and impressively, I might add, received six letters of interest. The six candidates include Brian Armstrong, Ethan Campbell, Newell Chester, William Gallup, Gary Olson, and Adam Morris. All candidates are Coon Rapids residents interested in serving on this board, and a summary of the candidates is attached. The Anoka County Board of Commissioners is the entity responsible for the appointment of these positions. However, the city council may make recommendations for the Anoka County Board to consider, and the letter attached provides an explanation of the nomination and appointment process. So, uh, we'll be looking to nominate the six stated candidates to the Anoka County Board for consideration of appointment to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd move approval of the ICWC contract and nomination of the six named candidates for the Coon Creek Watershed District, which are on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Any discussion?
Uh, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
So first off, just thanks to everybody who submitted a nomination. Um, it's just always great to see people willing to volunteer to help out. And second, uh, thank you to Scott Miller from the Department of Corrections for coming in and sort of explaining the, uh, um, ICWC program to us. A lot of really good information and certainly appreciate someone taking the time out of their day to help us learn more.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to for the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the consent agenda is, um, approved. Item four on this evening's agenda is to consider award of contract for 21-8 West Water Treatment Plant Booster Four and Five Upgrade. Uh, per their master contracting agreement, staff retained short Elliott Hendrickson for design and construction services. For rehabilitation of booster pump numbers four and five located in the West Water Treatment Plant, council accepted plans and specs on January 4th, 2021, and authorized solicitation of bids. Bids were originally open January 27th. Immediately after the bids were opened, a substantial pricing error was discovered by a subcontractor that was included under several of the general contractors. Upon notification to the city, an internal review, um, recommended modifying the specifications to include the direct purchase of certain materials by the city and rebidding the project. Uh, council authorized the rebid at its February 2nd. Project was advertised for rebid in the Anoka County Union Herald, um, and Finance and Commerce, and bids were received on March 9th, 2021, and we had four bidders. Pretty tight bidding pool there. 286, 287, 294, and $303,000. Um, and the engineer's estimate for the project was 250,300. Um, so, I just about whipped into the motion, forgetting we were not in the consent agenda anymore. Mr. Hammer, anything you want to cover on that, or you've got most of the details in there, I think?
Yes, I think you covered it, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 21-8/9, awarding a contract to Pioneer Power Incorporated in the amount of $286,190 for project 21-8 West Water Treatment Plant Booster Four and Five Upgrade.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Uh, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I have a question for, for Mr. Hammer, and I think the award is being awarded correctly. Here's what our recommendation is. But in our 2021 budget, we have $725,000 budgeted for this. I see with this contract, we're at 286,000, and with the 193 that we've purchased ahead of time, it seems like we're just well under budget. Are we actually well under budget, or is there more work to be performed yet?
Councilmember Grisgoviac, you are correct. We are well under budget. There's a little bit of consulting dollars in here, so it'll be about half a million. So there's about $250,000 savings. Well, perceived savings. Because it's a budget number, much like I blew it in the last work session one. I maybe made up for it here. Unfortunately, they're different enterprise funds, so...
Okay. Great. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Thank you. Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, to me, I think this is just an example of the kinds of things that we do within our city that is just great, that we are working to make sure that our infrastructure is sound and that we maintain and do the maintenance that is necessary versus allowing things to deteriorate, and then all of a sudden, there's a big bill. By having all of this regular maintenance and to make sure that things are working and are safe, it is a testament to our public works, um, teams to be able to make sure that all this is happening and making sure that we're doing the right things at the right time, and it's the right way to go.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
I hate to follow that with a technical question, so I'm sorry. Tried to sneak in.
It's okay.
Um, so just two questions I think I know the answer to, but the engineering estimate for the project was for the bid, not for the bid plus the direct purchase of materials, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good, because otherwise, it's way off. Um, so it's pretty close, that's fine. And then last time, we talked about this, because of the rebid led to a bit of an unusual situation where everyone could see the bids the other group had on the old bid. Um, do you... Just looking for an opinion here, do you feel like the bidding process ended up fair and, and no one's gonna have any complaints that lead to any issues that somebody at an adjacent table might have to deal with?
Uh, Councilmember Demmer, uh, I believe that we had so many bids, and they were all within a close range, that it, it just made it a little more competitive. And I went back and I looked at the one bid, which was the high bidder last time, um, and we were about, uh, nearly $20,000 less than that bid last time. So I don't, again, want to call that a savings, but I think it, it gave people the opportunity to sharpen their pencils and be competitive in this.
Okay. I mean, on one hand, it's easy to say, oh, we should do that every time, but of course, that would not be ethical. Don't do that every time, but I'm glad to hear that it didn't lead to any, any issues that you perceive, because that was, that was the part that I was worried about, is if somehow that kind of blew the spirit of, of a single bid process. But, uh, I... It, it looked reasonable to me comparing it to last time, and, and so I just wanted to double check that everyone was okay with it.
And I think also with that is, uh, we did have to change the specs and the everything just to do a direct purchase and install. So we did change the project a little bit by directly purchasing, which, um, isn't a straight repeat of what we did last time. So they had to think about it a little bit differently.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item five on this evening's agenda is to consider resolution number 21-3/8, accepting plans and specifications for miscellaneous trail reconstruction and authorizing solicitation of bids. The proposed improvements, um, are comprised of the following trail projects: Riverdale Park Trail Reconstruction, approximately .3 miles, uh, and pedestrian curb ramp installations, and Thorpe Park Trail Reconstruction, 950 linear feet, and new connection pedestrian curb ramp installations and drainage improvements. If approved, the advertisement is scheduled to be published in March with a bid opening for April 9th, 2021. Bid results and a recommendation for contract award would be presented to council at the April 20th, 2021 meeting, and then once the contract has been awarded, the work will be scheduled to take place between June and July of 2021. Um, anything you want to add to that, Mr. Hammer?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Since both of these trails are in Ward One, I will make a motion to adopt resolution 21-3/8 approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 miscellaneous trail improvement project.
Second.
We have a motion by Grisgoviac and a second by Demmer. Um, and that was number 21-3/8, right? You probably said that.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this?
How, your honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Mostly for the benefit of people at home. Um, if you can just maybe do a 10,000-foot on, on how these are the parks that, or the trails that were specifically picked versus other trails in the system.
Yes, Councilmember Demmer, council. We do an evaluation, much like we do our roadway, um, and so we've identified, um, these trail segments, and then we do our own estimates and try to lump them into what is allowable budget that was approved. And so, actually, our first choice was one down in Erlinson, but there's going to be a met council project going on, and we didn't want to build a trail that they may tear up. So we bumped that one down the list and pulled one of these up. So, um, it's pavement condition, priorities, and available funding.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item six, which is to consider resolution 21-40, requesting advance of state aid funding for our 2021 state aid bond payment. Uh, Mr. Hammer, do you want me to just read this paragraph here? Looks like it's pretty comprehensive.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'll just briefly state, um, we, we were aggressive in our state aid program, especially 2016, so we were borrowing ahead. Um, this is a year that we're taking off from that. Um, we were, um, we used some state aid bonds versus city bonding money, and part of the requirements for state aid is you have to pay those off. And since we're in a deficit with our fund balance, we technically have to borrow ahead to pay for that bond payment. Uh, I just did the math here a little while ago, and it looks like in 2022, we would have about $1 million available for, for use in the city, uh, within that account. So taking the negative that it was already there, adding in this bond payment, and taking our allotment from next year, will be about $1 million, 1.1 to the good for 2022, and we'll kind of be back on, on pace in 2023 with available MSA funding. So this is just to cover a state aid bond payment, and because we're deficit, we have to take an advance to do that.
Not that I question you at all, but I have to look at the city manager and watch him nod, and then I go, okay, good. We're good. Um, all right. Counsel, what are your wishes on this then?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 21-40, requesting advanced MSA funding for the city's 2021 state aid bond payment.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item seven is to consider resolutions designating additional municipal state aid street designations. Mr. Hammer, you want to take the, maybe the 20,000-feet on this one, or?
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. Um, as stated in the memo, the city is allowed to designate up to 20% of its, of its total mileage for state aid funding. That is our portion of the state gas tax. Uh, we have about one and a quarter miles available to us. We talked about this in great detail about a year ago in work session. Uh, we built these roadways that are proposed to be added to meet state aid standards, so there are no implications for existing residences, parking, et cetera. Um, so we knew we had this available to us. That's why we built them to these standards. This one seems to be a pretty straightforward ask, that we add this to our state aid allotment, which allows more of that gas tax money, uh, to come our way by putting these on our system, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And for clarification, it's Drake Street from Egress Boulevard to 100th Avenue, that's .17 miles. 100th Avenue Northwest, Egress Boulevard to Zilla, that's .45 miles. And then Zilla Street Northwest to 100th Avenue to Coon Rapids Boulevard, that's another .05 miles. So the proposed roadways total .67 miles of new MSA designations. Any questions for Mr. Hammer?
How, your honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
So I really appreciate this map that you gave us, which, you know, really makes it clear what we're trying to do with the state aid, right? That it's the collectors, not the individual city streets. Um, so that helps, but the... I guess the only question, um, do we try to pick roads that are, if we're going to add some, that are in pretty bad shape so that we can get the money right away? Or are you trying to pick the ones that are in really good shape, so we're... Why, why are these the ones that got picked, is probably the, the real question there?
Councilmember Demmer, you continue to, you, you collect needs on them immediately. It, it's not based upon a condition. It's based upon the population, the, um, traffic volume on these roadways, and some general costs that, that MinDOT gets from bidding around the state. So it, it wouldn't matter if they were, they were the worst roads in the city or the best roads in the city. You collect needs on them all the time.
Okay. And they were picked because they're sort of next on the list for traffic counts, or...
Uh, they were picked because we were looking at Wedgewood and a few other neighborhoods last year, and, and you have to connect state aid to state aid, so you can't just pick a street out of, out of... There are many criteria that you have to meet. And so, um, as we were preparing for this, we knew these would be more collector-type streets. We knew we were, want some additional width and parking for this redevelopment neighborhood anyway, so we said, let's just bill them to those standards, add those to our system. Um, we struggle, quite frankly, trying to find enough mileage that isn't going to upset neighborhoods or, um, start putting lines on a map just to, just to make those connections. So we want to make sure we're using it for the right purposes.
And I should ask this on the last one, but there was no reason to do these in the other order? Will we add them first and then ask for money? Because it's all the same meeting, it's not going to affect anything?
It doesn't matter. Our 2021 allotment has already been set. This, this just changes things for the future.
For 2022. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we just added that 111th last year, I think, to this, correct? Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge to find the right streets to line up with all of the guidelines, but I, I agree that these are good streets for that. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Oh, shoot.
Oh, shoot?
I guess I could keep going.
Councilmember Demmer?
All right. Uh, can I do them all at once?
This road?
Excellent. Uh, move resolution number 21-41, designating Drake Street Northwest from Egress Boulevard 100th Avenue, sorry, Egress Boulevard to 100th Avenue as a municipal state aid street. Further move resolution number 21-42, designating 100th Avenue Northwest from Egress Boulevard to Zilla Street as a municipal state aid street. And further move resolution number 21-43, designating Zilla Street from 100th Avenue to Coon Rapids Boulevard as a municipal state aid street.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Any discussion on this? Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item eight is to consider resolution 21-44, granting final plat Port Riverwalk Third Edition Centra Homes. Mr. Harlecker, you're here. Do you have your, do you have a, a thing for us, or do you want? I was, I was unfortunately trying to look at everything on my iPad, and it was really difficult to find that third edition in all those things.
Kind of, kind of hidden in there, Mayor.
And every time I get it opened up, just big enough, then it shuts down and goes back to a different page, so I thought, Mr. Harlecker would be there.
Mayor and, uh, council members, uh, Centra Homes is requesting final plat approval for their third edition. Um, this is the overall site, the project off of Coon Rapids Boulevard. Um, this is the third edition here. This is a preliminary plat, and it's this area, uh, right here in the dark dash. Second edition was this portion here, and first edition was the east end. Um, third edition is about, is 15 units of their port homes. Um, here's the final plat. As you can see, this is the layout. Um, they will be required to pay, excuse me, park dedication for the 15 lots at a rate of $2,000 per lot. And, uh, remainder of the, uh, preliminary plat will stay as outlots, which is, uh, this area down here. And, uh, it's recommended that the, uh, council approve resolution 21-44 with the, uh, five conditions in the staff report.
Mr. Harlecker, did you describe those as port homes or court homes? I missed it.
Excuse me, uh, court homes.
Court homes. Okay, thank you. Is that, is that their... Is that, that, like, the, what I thought they described first as row homes or something?
Yeah, they're, they're smaller homes on smaller lots. Uh, generally, they're in the area between 100th Avenue and Coon Rapids Boulevard, uh, right in through here.
Okay. Yep, those are the ones. Thank you. Anybody, Mr. Questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Uh, in planning case 19-2, I move approval of resolution 21-44, granting final plat approval for Port Riverwalk Third Edition with the five stated conditions. Do you need me to read them into the record, or is that sufficient?
As stated, I think it's sufficient.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Um, the potential pedestrian overpass, would that be right down, kind of in front of this planned third edition? Is that where that would be envisioned?
Um, maybe I can refer this to, uh, Mr. Frenelius, but I think it comes in right in here?
That open space?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Grisgoviac. Yeah, we, the pedestrian bridge is, is designed, for the most part, to fit within Coon Rapids Boulevard right away. I believe there's a small segment of an easement that we requested, which I believe, I don't know if it's part of this plat or the previous plat, might have been the second edition. I thought there was an easement that we were going to include, not as part of the plat approval, but something that we, we requested of the developer. So that is accommodated as part of the development. Okay, I believe it does touch down a little on this portion, and we did previously approve, um, separate easement documents to secure what's needed.
That's covered. Okay. Okay. They've covered it for me. Great, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
No.
Good question, though. All right, well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And we're on to item nine, Consider the Term Sheet for Riverdale Station Apartments Phase Two, and I'll bet that's why Mr. Frenelius is here tonight then. You want me to read this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can provide a brief summary. Perfect, if you'd prefer. So this is the first of two items on your agenda this evening. The second relates to, the Third Amendment to a purchase agreement, which the HRA will discuss at a meeting to follow this council meeting tonight. As most of the council is aware, the city's been working with Sherman Associates for a number of years on the Riverdale Station apartment project. All the way back, starting in 2016, the city began working with Sherman and also Anoka County. And I bring that up because some of the provisions that we have included in this term sheet relate to the original deal that the city made with the county, particularly as it relates to tax increment financing, which I'll address in a moment. Sherman has successfully completed the south half of the, of the site. They built the Nova and Lyra apartments. Those are completed, those are now, I think, close to full occupancy. As part of that original purchase agreement, there were some provisions related to acquisition of the balance of the site, but we didn't have a lot of development details. And so in talking with the developer, both staff and representatives from the developer agreed that it would maybe be appropriate to have a term sheet. So that's what you have before you this evening. As you recall, back in February, we had a work session where the developer presented a concept plan for the north half of the site. And so that is really what's reflected in this term sheet. And real briefly, they refer to it as Phase One and Phase Two. This really relates to the north half of the site. So Phase One would be a market rate apartment project. 210 to 227 units is kind of the range that they, that they've identified. They're still working through their designs for, for that building in particular, which would be the first of the two that would be constructed. And then Phase Two would be 80 units of affordable senior apartments. The term sheet reflects responsibilities on both sides, so the developer would need to get land use approvals, also obviously acquire the property from the HRA. The city then would need to create a tax increment district only for the senior development. So we talked about that previously, that the assistance would be provided for the, for the senior development, and we would create a TIF district at a later date. In terms of the phasing of this project, Phase One, so that would be the market rate component, would close on or before October 29th. We do need to extend the purchase agreement, so that's another item that we'll, we'll address as part of the HRA action later on the agenda. And then they would have to start that building, or at least break ground, by November 30th of, of this year. And then they would have 600 days, which is about, which is 20 months, to actually complete that, that project. Phase Two then, which is the senior component, would start, would need to start by October 31st of 2022, and that would be roughly 500 days, 16 and a half months to, to be completed. I do want to address just briefly the, the tax increment piece. What this document reflects is that the, the city, if it's to provide assistance, would be for, for Phase Two or the senior component. We can't provide assistance to a market rate project under, under state statute. If we do that, the developer would, would be entitled to up to 90% of that increment for 10 years. That's related to the original deal that we had negotiated with the county, that we wouldn't provide any more than 10 years of assistance. There's a provision in the term sheet that talks about the city agreeing to support additional applications to help close the gap on the affordable part of this project. Right now, their analysis reveals that there's about a $12,000 gap per unit on the senior, on the senior portion of this project. The tax increment analysis that we've done projects roughly, 2/3 of that could be, could be generated, so there's still a gap that would result. And so what we've essentially agreed to in the term sheet is that we'll support applications to MHFA and Met Council to, to, to try and close, close that gap. We are also in the process of discussing public engagement. That's not addressed here in the term sheet, but we're thinking that we would do something similar to what we did previously. We'll have to try and figure that out. In the times that we're in right now, you know, in terms of how we would do a virtual open house or some type of a hybrid format to at least let the neighborhood know what's, what's proposed for, for this, for the, for the north half of the property, prior to the time that they would come in for formal land use approval, which they would plan to do sometime this spring, summer timeframe, to then close and, and break ground later in this, later this year as it relates to the market rate component. We do have a representative from Sherman Associates, Trevor Martinez, who is available if, if there are any questions of the developer, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Frenelius. Anybody have any questions?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
I might just have a quick question, process question. You know, it says the term sheet is non-binding, and when you look at the term sheet, it says things like, "We may do this," and "We might do that." And so just to, to be clear, we're, we're doing this saying that it is our intention, but it's not legally, we're, we're not agreeing legally that we're going to do these things, but we're best faith, if, if we approve it, we're, we're putting our best, best faith forward that that's what we'll do.
Councilmember Demmer, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. I'm happy to make the motion if no one else, okay. Move to approve the term sheet with Sherman Associates, Inc.
Second?
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. And, Mr. Demmer, I assumed since it was only two pages, it couldn't have been very legally binding.
Exactly. Just, just wanted to make it clear that even though it's not legally binding, that by voting for it, we are saying we intend to do it, but things could change, right? That's kind of the way to view it?
And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I think, you know, the, the two buildings there have been very successful, and look forward to seeing what the possibilities are for the other half of the site.
Yeah. I would like to speak to the, like, when I first joined council, it just seemed like this was gonna be an empty lot forever. And, and it's really been fun to see something that I, I don't know that we could have envisioned a higher or better use for it than what we ended up with, so kudos to everybody involved, because I, I know there was a lot of doubt when it first floated by that this would ever actually happen.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Maybe a question for Mr. Frenelius, or maybe Trevor from Sherman, but we were presented a concept plan to this, I don't know, maybe a month ago or so. I was just wondering when we might see that updated concept plan from the developer or from city staff.
Councilmember Griscoviac, that would be a perfect question for Mr. Martinez to answer.
Mr. Martinez?
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity, and, and we're very proud of the buildings that we've built there as well, so we appreciate the, the acknowledgement for the hard work that has gone for, for both myself and our predecessors to continue to develop these lots. We are still working through some of the, the concept phases. We have recently just gone through another one or two rounds of iterations, but we're hoping to get a, a full application and likely in the six to eight week range, but are happy to provide additional concepts before we move forward with, with DD sets and the full, full application if desired by council.
Okay. Mr. Griscoviac, you satisfied with that?
Yeah, just making sure that we have enough time for the public to see, you know, ahead of time and those, that open comment period and things like that.
Yep.
Yeah, as noted, we typically would hold public meetings and are happy to do that and figure out a way to, to do that and share with the neighborhood virtually for, for those who may or may not recognize me, I am from Coon Rapids originally, and, and recognize many of you on the council.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 10, to talk about liquor. Item, we're looking to introduce an ordinance revising City Code Section 5-203 Alcoholic Beverages. Mr. Frenelius, you wanna hit the highlights, or do you want me to read your thing here?
Actually, I, I think it's gonna be your, your honor.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Nice.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is an, an ordinance amendment to our alcoholic beverage Chapter 5, 200. Just a little bit of history, this is our Class B off-sell liquor license, and right now, it currently permits liquor sales for uses that are secondary to retail with a minimum of 50,000 square feet, which right now, I believe Costco's the only one that holds that. As you may recall, originally it was just alcohol and, or I'm sorry, just beer and wine. We've since added liquor to that, so it's a, sort of a full liquor license. Council's been aware, although it's been a while since we brought this back to you, there's been inquiries over the years from various grocers about wanting to come here and sell liquor, but not being able to meet that 50,000 square feet. So what this amendment proposes to do is to add a second prong to that, so either it could be a retail use with 50,000 square feet, or you could be a grocer with 25,000 square feet and be able to get this Class B license. Whether you qualify for either one of them, you still fall under the regulations of that, you can't transfer it, you gotta have that separate entrance, like you see in, in liquor stores with, you know, separate checkouts and warehouses and things like that, so it would be the exact same as our other Class B holder. But like I said, you could qualify it under being a grocer with 25,000 square feet, at least that's how we're proposing this particular ordinance. Theoretically, like a Cub Foods or something could qualify under both, but either way, like I said, this should allow for opportunities for those grocers wanting to come in and be able to sell liquor. So that's what we're here for, obviously, it's just an introduction tonight, so no need to take any action, but we are available for questions if there are any today.
So the last time we talked about this, we, we, we were disgusted if there was a way that we could specify groceries, and now I see we're, we're adding the language, "At least 50% of customer accessible sales in the display area is used for the sale of general line of food products intended for home preparation and consumption, and at least 30% of retail space is for perishable goods that include dairy, fresh produce, fresh meats, poultry, fish and frozen foods." And groceries represent the majority of sales in a grocery store, although there may be accessory uses. At any rate, when we, when we last talked about this, we were trying to get away from having to go in with a tape measure and measure the store and figure out, you know, if they had the right percentages. And, and I don't know how these percentages factor into, say, our current B license holder, but are these reasonable, or are these gonna put undue tolls on our staff to try and figure this out and undue restrictions on our retailers? I'm just curious.
That's, that's not the intent, obviously, and I'm gonna defer to this.
I understand. I understand. Now we have percentages, though.
We do, and it's, it's, you know, I think there's a balance, and Mr. Frenelius, if he has anything to add, you know, it's trying to balance that out of, we truly want it to be a grocer. And so I think this does, and I think it's fairly easily definable from our perspective of trying to determine whether it meets that. Now, again, every grocer's gonna be different and have a little different needs or what their, their niche is, so to speak. And so, like I said, we think we've captured the most, or we think we've captured what most grocers are going to be doing and should follow and fit into that, and we should be able to, be able to look at it and be able to determine fairly easy whether they do or not. Now, again, when we get out in reality, in the real world, that might be different, but that's our hope, and that's what we believe we've done here. And like I said, Mr. Frenelius spent some time on this, so if he has anything to add to that.
And, and to be clear, I support this, and I remember last time we talked about it, I was really an advocate for this, but it was gonna be hard to figure out.
Sure, we did talk about.
So maybe we gotta figure it out.
Defining grocery isn't as easy as it may appear.
Mr. Frenelius, do you wanna add to it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I, that I'll add to Mr. Brody's comments is that this was language, I don't remember which city, so I helped do part of the research on this. But I know that that was a, that was an issue that came up last June in the work session when we talked about this, and, and it seemed like the consensus of the council was, we're interested in grocery, we, we'd like a definition. I thi, I will say, I think it's better to have a standard that is at least somewhat measurable, as opposed to something that's more, more vague. And so, you know, I guess when it comes down to, as a practical matter, you know, going out and enforcing this, I guess that's something that we'll have to, we'll have to look like, look at, but, you know, I mean, for the most part, I think this defines generally accepted what, what a grocery user is, and I think that's, that differentiates it from non-grocery. So I think the percentages are helpful, and, and I think that will be important for us as we, as we move forward.
Okay. No, I, I, I agree, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, we're getting to onerous. Did that cover what you wanted to add, Mr. Stan Weddle?
Yes, it did, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, Your Honor, I, I think it's very reasonable. I also know that, you know, in those unintended consequences, if they happen, I mean, it's not, it's not so painful to bring it back and tell us to change the numbers, and then it's a couple months, but as, as we change the numbers. So I wouldn't, I think if you think this is probably right, it's probably a good place to start, and if a future user comes or, you know, really, this is a response to the grocery industry changing. You know, 30 years ago, this wasn't how groceries ran, and, and now everybody wants to come in, wants to have an attached liquor store. And so we gotta update our ordinances to match what the, the industry says. If in 15 years, the amount of groceries in a grocery store drops to 45%, then, then we'll go back and change it. I mean, and I, I certainly don't want us to be like, during the holiday season, they put out a few extra things, and suddenly they're at 49% and we freak out about it, you know? It, it, it would have to be based on their plan and best intent and, and whatever, but, you know, if it, if it seems to be onerous and seems to cause a problem, then I would just say, "Come back to us." I'm assuming that we're going to hear from some of our Class A license holders who may not be entirely in favor. But I did want to just, you know, really reiterate for people at, at home that there's not gonna be suddenly a giant amount of liquor in your grocery store. It has to be a separate entrance, it has to be constructed as its own liquor store. And so it looks like a liquor store attached to a grocery store, not a liquor store in the middle of a grocery store.
And that's, and that's not our code.
That's the state law. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on this? Okay, well then, in the case of ordinance revising City Code Section 5-203 Alcoholic Beverages, we will consider that introduced, and we'll address this, what, probably our next meeting, huh? Okay? All right. And we are at open mic public comment. Anybody here to address counsel for open mic? Okay. I have no reports on previous open mics, and we are on to other business. And probably the most important piece of other business right now would be the, kind of the unfortunate incident we had yesterday, Chief. If you could kind of brief the council on what happened, and the community again? Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Council, obviously, last night, I'm sure you saw that I spoke to the media regarding the incident. Obviously, transparency is an important thing. We try to get our information as quickly as possible, especially just to put people at ease. But just as an overview for people who haven't seen it, today is March, it's, what, 16th? So yesterday, at 4:30 in the afternoon, our officers were involved in an incident where a 911 caller reported a suicidal male who was in crisis walking up Hanson Boulevard with a handgun, carrying a handgun. Our officers encountered him out in the street, and I assure you, they were desperate to avoid an officer-involved shooting. I know people maybe have a hard time wrapping their minds around that, but I would encourage people to think like how an officer would think as they're going there, they're like, "Boy, I hope this doesn't go bad," I assure you. And they had a couple of different options that they tried to use, what we call less-than-lethal means. We've talked about it in the past at council meetings, those less lethal shotguns that we, we discussed. Those shoot beanbag projectile. They were given the need to maintain distance. They were considered the best option at that time to try to separate the man from the handgun. Obviously, that failed, and that the officers were obligated to use their firearms. That said, the male, I understand now, was at Henneva County Medical Center and is working on recovery. And the depart, you know, sincerely, this is a person who's a part of our community. We're, we hope he recovers and that he gets the mental help he needs. I could go on and on about sort of those unmet mental health needs for people that are in our community, it just keeps popping up over and over again. Smart people with the ability to make big decisions need to, need to help us. We, we can't keep having these kinds of encounters with people because we're on our own, the officers are on their own, and it's a, it's a challenging situation. And I just want to tell the community too, is that, obviously, you know that the legislature made some changes recently and, and which gets discussed about the use of deadly force. Our officers in Coon Rapids have always been trained to this new standard that is, is a part of the statute, which talks about the sanctity of life. We've always been that way here in Coon Rapids, that's been our ordinary training. We avoid using deadly force as much as we possibly can and have always done that. And the men and women who work here do a heroic job every day, and they do their best, and when things go south, they take it hard. That said, they're a resilient bunch, I'm proud to be a part of them and a part of this organization, and we're gonna be all right moving forward. But, you know, of course, like I said, we'll, we'll turn the focus back on this young man who is clearly distraught and clearly in a bad circumstance, and, and, you know, I hope for his recovery and that he finds his way to peace too, so. Meanwhile, the BCA is investigating, so I, you know, I'm not really at liberty to discuss a lot of details now, that's their investigation, but they're a professional outfit too, and they'll do a great job, so.
Absolutely. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. Chief, could you just briefly talk about some of the proactive thinking that the department has done over the past year about situations like this that caused us to enter into kind of a, an agreement with Blaine, and how we propose to, to kind of deal with these kinds of things in the future and, and give a little insight to the community on that as well?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for that opportunity. Is that, you know, of course, when we go through budgeting process, I'm sure a lot of it, from a citizen's perspective, they get glazed over in the eyes. But small things that are significant that were in this year's budget was what we call an embedded social worker, meaning we have a social worker now that works with us here at CRPD. This social worker, we split 50/50 with the city of Blaine. This person's sole job is to take our, our citizens that we know who have mental health issues that are undertreated, and we try to target those people and get them the help that they need as best we're able to. It's, it's imperfect, because I, I assure you, behind every person who experiences a crisis is a family member who's been trying for years to get help for their person. But we just, we can't wait around for somebody else's system to start working. We, in conjunction with the work of the council, agreed that, "Let's try to be a little more targeted and deliberate in Coon Rapids about how we get services to people." And she just started two weeks ago, and this is not a person that she had an opportunity to interact with, but it was somebody who was known to us in the police department and is somebody who, who, that her job would be to intervene and to try to get services and to help the family, and do what we can to be a little more deliberate. But, but there needs to be more on the backend, we can only do so much, because she's not a psychiatrist, she's not a therapist, but we just need to try to get people to where they need to be and try to navigate systems, and with the hopes that maybe the systems catch up to us a little bit. But, you know, we can't just sit around and wait for somebody else to figure out their business, we, we have to be proactive about it. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to mention that.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilmember. On to brighter news, lighter news. I got an email from Vanessa, and she is the general manager of the New Caribou Coffee on Coon Rapids Boulevard, and they will be having a ribbon cutting at 10:00 AM Friday, March 26th, for any of the council that would like to attend. So everybody check your calendars.
Will there be coffee?
Pretty, pretty sure. Suddenly, I'm picturing whoever, whoever's got that area, the CRPD is gonna be helping us that morning. us that morning. All right, so, yeah, 10:00 AM Friday, March 26th. And any other business? Mr. Stummel?
Not at this time.
No? All right. I think we're, we're in planning for the Fourth of July celebration this year, we're hoping to have one. We're ordering the fireworks, so we're committed.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I can comment on that, I suppose. The, the planning group did get together last week, and is making plans as best as we are able right now, obviously, that they'll have to deviate depending on what the conditions are at the time related to governor's orders and other things. However, we are kind of following the lead of the governor and the state at this point, who are saying that they too are planning for large events to take place this summer. So these things don't happen unless you plan for them, so we're setting about planning for them as best we can, and if we have to deviate or change or modify in April or May or June, we'll do so, but at this point, we're being optimistic, and hopefully, we can pull off as much as we can. So more to come on that, but same goes for our summer concert series, and Summer in the City meetings is something we've also discussed recently that we're gonna be able to do, we think, in a fairly safe mode, that it'll already meets the outdoor restrictions for the most part, and by that point, we hope that those restrictions are a little higher, but it's an outdoor event, we can space out, things like that. So again, with any of these, it's always at the sort of mercy of whatever the rules are at the time, but we feel pretty good about where things are going.
Excellent, thank you. Other business to come before council this evening?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.